Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, May 2nd, 2018 meeting, Commissioner Lundey.
Our inspirational word for the day, "Live in harmony with each other, don't try to act important but enjoy the company of ordinary people, and don't think you know it all." I like that one.
Commissioner Krikowski has the dog.
We've got probably the most laid-back dog we've ever had at the Commissioners' meeting. This little guy is about six years old, he's a puggle, he will be available on Saturday, come down to Lorraine County Dog Kennel, pick him up, take him home, $66, he'll be spayed, neutered, if he's not already, and almost all of his shots, so come see him, we only have ten dogs in our kennel today, so we're thinking social media is really working out for our kennel these days, so thanks for everybody coming and helping out, and remember, adopt, don't shop.
At 9:45 we'll have a presentation on the Lakefront Connectivity Plan, under resolutions we have no investments, appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordaz.
Thank you, Mr. Kaylow, we have a number of potential hires, specifically possibly a 911, maybe a maintenance collection center, a few things to talk about, also want to talk a little bit about getting ready for negotiations this summer, we haven't really done that, we think we're going to do it, we haven't done it, and potential sale of real estate and a pending legal matter, all of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've identified. Thank you.
Approve away the reading on the minutes of April 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Enter into participation agreement course effective May 1st, 2018 through April 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Enter an agreement with Marcia Colegrove at 12189 Melody Lane Graff to allow fab Willis services along with county engineer to propose sanitary lateral, and the amount will be placed on said tax duplicate.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Jim, want to talk about that a little bit, how we're working this out with this resident?
Yeah.
Oh, Jerick, okay.
Yeah, there were a number of residents out here who have defective laterals, and they just can't afford to make the improvement, so what we're going to do is, they're agreeing to let us have a contractor go on there, repair it, and then that will be added to their tax bill, and paid at $250 a year over the next five or six years.
Okay, wonderful, we'll have more of these coming in, I'm assuming, based on our discussions?
I think so.
We have some, you know, every one of our plants, we found about, they're old, 90 or 80 or 90 percent of their laterals were failed, there's been a lot of compliance, a lot more than we had anticipated, these are the last few that constitute hardship cases, usually fixed income, older, not a lot of resources to front up the money for this type of work, voluntary tax duplicate works real well, there'll be, I think we decided on 2% or 3%, because constitutes a loan, so there'll be a 2% or 3% for that, and of course if the taxes aren't paid, and then when the property is sold, we recoup that at the time of sale, through that process, so I think it's a good partnership with the residents, and it also helps with our INI, which has been a constant problem, even though we relined all the sewers, we found that we had a lot coming in from the laterals, and we're probably going to see a lot more of these, because we have other areas where we have some package plants that were going to be doing the same work, even though we're finishing Pheasant Run this July, we haven't addressed any of the laterals down there, and those 600 homes down there, we've only addressed the main re-lines, and collapsing of that plant, taking it up to the sewer plant, Graff, excuse me, La Grange, so I anticipate lateral work still there to be done down there.
Well, it's a nice process to start, though, this way we've got it going for those who have the most need.
It helps folks, remember on Redford Farms, we offered the residents back there the same type of process, now the difference there is, they didn't have fat laterals, they didn't have laterals, they had dry sewers in the ground, we finally brought the main trunking down Redford Road, and we waited about a year and a half to tie in that trunk with that dry sewer, but they didn't really avail themselves to that process, so, you know, we're starting to see how that's working back in there, we're going to have quite a bit of compliance, but I still think there's going to be a few that we're going to need to work with back on Redford Farms subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Community Development, a work contract to Genmet Construction LLC, Lorraine, in the amount of $28,221 for grant assistance from CHIP program, year 16 home rehab for Lauren Mitski at 672 Irving Park Boulevard, Sheffield Lake.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Enter into partnership agreement with Overland Sheffield Lake for purposes of outlining the responsibilities and the terms of compliance with the program year 2018 CHIP.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Adopt Policy and Procedures Manual for the Community Housing Improvement Program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Award Agreement with Bromhill Engineering and Surveying Company, Avon, in the amount of $22,000 for the professional engineering, surveying, and construction services for sanitary sewer rehab, including survey, design, construction plans, rehab specifications, bid tabs, cost estimates, project inspection, and construction administration for the CDBG-funded sewer improvement projects for eight streets in Sheffield Lake, East Drive, Stark Street, Oliver Street, Hall Street, Robert Street, Hawthorne, Ivanhoe, and Tennyson, and will be awarded by the CDBG FY17.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
A lot of good sewer projects getting done in Sheffield Lake, much needed.
I was going to ask, the previous, number 14, the Policy and Procedures Manual, were there any changes, any significant changes to that?
Don Romancic, Lorraine County Community Development, most of the changes incorporated in there are basically updating memos that the state has issued clarifying how they're interpreting regulations or overlaying, in addition, we have formally incorporated policies over the last several years, such as our conflict of interest that we had revamped last year, so those are the primary changes, most of it's housed.
Do we put the appeals, do we have an appeal process that we put?
The appeals process is part of the state memos, and there, if we have a conflict with, between a homeowner and a contractor, if the department's unable to settle it and get it resolved, then it would go to a board that would be appointed by the Board of Commissioners that is made up of someone from the county, probably would be a Board of Commissioner, and then an appointee that is a homeowner from the county, and then a contractor in the county, and those three would attempt to hear and resolve, if they are unable to come to a resolution, then it would go to mediation, is that correct, right now I'm at a loss, was mediation or arbitration?
I think it goes to mediation, and then after the mediation, it can go to binding arbitration, my problem with that was, who bears the cost of that, because if you have a resistant applicant that we feel doesn't meet the kind of strict criteria, we've run into one of those, Don, I've been battling, and usually about once a year we have one or two that becomes problematic, who has to pay for that whole process, and unfortunately we do, so we'd have to pay for the mediation, and then if that didn't resolve the issue, then we'd have to pay for binding arbitration in the matter, and that can get quite costly, and I wasn't really satisfied, because when somebody doesn't have any skin in the game and any risk, they tend to push the limits of tolerance, but unfortunately, that's a state requirement that we had to adopt.
Well, we are paying, the good news, for lack of a better term at this point, is that it is an eligible expense of the grant, but it does come at the expense of our administration money, so it is a real cost borne by the county at the end of the day.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Award Agreement to Polos and Schmidt Design Group, Inc., Sandusky, in the amount of $25,300 to provide professional architectural and engineering services for the design, construction plans, and drawings, bid specifications, bid tabs, cost estimates, project inspections, and construction administration for the CDBG-funded Joyce Hanks Community Center Edition Project in Sheffield Lake, this has been awarded by the CDBG FY17, and anything exceeding this cost will be paid by the city.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, they've been working on trying to get this done for a while, so it's a nice project.
That's the one up on the lake, right?
Right on the lake, yeah, the community center, so it's a nice project.
It's needed to be expanded for a number of years up there.
Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, apply for the 2019 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program and 2019 Imperial Driving Enforcement Grant from the Haad Department of Public Safety, this is a reimbursement mode grant paid from the account Sheriff's salary and designated traffic blitz beginning October 1st, 2018 through September 30, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Apply for the 2018-2019 DARE Grand in the amount of $22,639.40, which represents 50% of the base salary of an officer for a nine-month school year, said local match is $22,639.40, paid from the Sheriff's salary account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordaz.
Why don't we go into our presentation?
I don't see everybody here, though. Is Grace coming, Michelle, or no?
Okay. Michelle's here.
Okay, we're ready to go, then.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Johnson, I'm a Director with Environmental Design Group, and we had the pleasure of working with the county, as well as the four lakefront communities within our Lorraine County Lakefront on the Lorraine County Lakefront Connectivity Plan, so definitely wanted to get started, how do I pull this? It's coming. Great, if we could just view it full screen if possible, if not, we can just move forward.
That's up to you.
That is full screen. Okay, we're good. All right, well, on behalf of EDG and the entire team, we wanted to thank NOAACA for the funding for this, they contributed pretty substantial funding, we also had about $86,000, we had $1,000 donated by the Commissioners, as well as $1,000 donated by MetroParks to make this possible, so it was $86,000 of federal, $2,000 of local, which obviously is a fantastic match, we also wanted to note that this was a highly competitive round, so putting this application together on the local, you know, level was definitely significant, so we are very, very pleased, you know, to move forward with this, the one thing I do want to mention, we're not going to go through all of our existing conditions, we had a pretty substantial process with this, kickoff meeting, three stakeholder meetings, and five public meetings, you do have a copy of the final report digitally and printed, if you have any questions about any of that information, please let me know, we're going to kind of go straight to the recommendations, if that's okay, given the effort of time, this is a planning study, though, so the one thing that we wanted to point out is that the TLCI program is really meant for using transportation improvements to improve economic development, quality of life, connectivity, et cetera, for this project, a main goal of that was connecting to the lakefront, which is obviously a very important, fantastic asset for us, but that being said, there's no preliminary engineering, right-of-way acquisition, any sort of, you know, design level, so everything you're seeing, even with the graphics look, you know, a little bit more formalized, it is conceptual, so just keep that in mind as we're moving forward, kind of going through all this, once again, you know, just using transportation improvement dollars to promote economic development and promote just quality of life improvements, transportation, active transportation in our communities, active transportation was definitely something that was key throughout this process of getting people out and about, mental, physical health is obviously very important, the Department of Health was very involved with this process as well, and that's definitely a big goal of theirs as well, the study area wasn't all of the communities in their entirety, it was basically all the census tracts within Lorraine County, and then the portion of Vermillion that crosses over into Erie County, so we pulled census tracts to be able to make sure that we had just solid demographic data, so it's not necessarily the community as a whole per the municipality boundaries, but the census tract that actually touched the Route 6 corridor and touched the lake, kind of looking at our right-of-way analysis, the point of this is that it changes, so if you see all those little colors moving through your, you know, moving through the corridor, every time the color changes, our condition changes within the existing right-of-way, this has changed, most of this data was collected in very early 2017, even some of it in 16, and looking at that, Lorraine in particular has moved forward, this plan in multiple areas, bike lanes have been added connecting into downtown, so this is really a snapshot from when we were doing those existing conditions, obviously the final report is finalized, but this has been updated, and we're very, very proud to see that people are moving this forward, so point of this map is just to show that we have a lot of varying conditions within that public right-of-way, which was kind of interesting going through, as I mentioned, we had a pretty extensive stakeholder and public involvement process as part of this, hundreds of people, hundreds and hundreds of people were reached as part of this, so above and beyond kind of our project kickoff meeting, we did have those three formal stakeholder meetings and five public meetings, we went all over, we went to every single community, tried to do some unique public involvement, including going to the Vermillion's Gardener's Fair, instead of just kind of sitting in a more formal setting, trying to get people when they were already out and about, but we did reach every single community, some of them multiple times, so going through the transportation alternatives, the big thing that we heard through that extensive public involvement, and we presented quite a few different scenarios as far as typical sections, where things should occur, not occur, but it was very loud and clear, I'd say about halfway through the process, that in general, people wanted our recommendations to be within the public right-of-way, we were originally open to looking at potentially acquiring some easements, maybe directly adjacent to the roadway, and that became very, very clear and very, very vocal through voting, comments, things like that, that that was not an option, that it, you know, the plan just wasn't going to have feet and wasn't going to take root if we really didn't have everything proposed within the public right-of-way, so very quickly, we have multiple situations as we go through the corridor, with working within that public right-of-way, and knowing that we didn't want to potentially look at buying any sort of private property, we do have change in conditions as you move through the corridor, when it fits, it was very clear that people wanted either a side path or a trail, it's basically a trail that runs adjacent to the roadway, so anytime that we had space within the public right-of-way, we proposed that side path, if we didn't have quite enough space for a side path, we proposed a widened sidewalk, if we didn't have enough space for a widened sidewalk, we proposed sidewalk, expanding sidewalks, et cetera, so basically, if there was space for it, we went into, you know, from a conceptual level, every single nitty-gritty detail of what we could use from a conceptual planning space, and tried to fit in the maximum amount of space possible to provide as much off-road connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians, for people that weren't comfortable necessarily riding on the road, in addition to that, in addition to that off-road connectivity, we do have bike lanes proposed in almost every single segment along the corridor, other than in Vermillion, downtown Vermillion, that fabric is so close with the curb-to-curb and the existing parking that's out there, that we do have sharrows recommended, which are just on-road symbols identifying to bicyclists and cars that they are there to share the roadway, which is a very common thing that you see in urban environments, slow traffic, you know, it's actually a very nice area to ride on-road if you're comfortable doing so, so very quickly, and I'm not going to go through all these, because they are in the final report, and kind of explain every single one, but we went through segment by segment, and as you'll see in the final document, you know, intersection by intersection, all of these different slides that I'm going through is where our right-of-way changes, and we have a little bit different recommendation as it relates to what is happening within the corridor, what we can fit within the corridor, and then, you know, at the end of the day, from a funding and implementation standpoint, what is able to be built where. We were looking at a variety of funding for this, you know, federal funds, with obviously this money coming from NOAACA, was always in the forefront of our minds, so we were making sure that with that space, we were looking at what was eligible for federal funding and following federal design guidelines, so that's part of the reason we couldn't fit certain facilities in certain areas, because we do have to follow the ODOT and ASHTO design criteria, that's only if federal funds are being used, that being said, we had some pinch points along the corridor where it just, space got tight, and we did have to change facility types, just bridges, overpasses, underpasses, et cetera, making sure that we're being cognizant of our existing conditions, and once again, trying to work within the existing right-of-way, so that being said, we have a pretty substantial corridor going into Vermillion Township, we're well over 30 miles, so the price tag that's associated with our various improvement is about $32 million, looking at that, we wanted to make sure that in that final report, that we were looking at fundable segments, so you're going to see that if you go through that final document, we do have some breaks in there, just strictly from a funding standpoint, we don't see really, really long corridors being, you know, funded anymore, the dollars are very different than they were, especially pre-recession in 2008, so we tried breaking these up into very implementable, fundable pieces, in addition to the areas that we think that federal funding would apply, a lot of the side path areas, as long as we use asphalt and not concrete, are also available for ODNR dollars, there's multiple grants out there, so we were trying to keep that in the forefront of our minds of, as we're making these recommendations, what do they look like, where do they fit, and also who can fund this, who's our potential grant sources, so we thought that was really important, and all of that is very, in detail, laid out in the final document, in a matrix showing all the different funding sources that were available, that was something that when we started off the project was very, very important to stakeholders, so that information is included, and once again, I'm not going to go into it right now, so overall, you know, above and beyond our main east-west corridor, we did look at potential connectivity north-south, in addition to our main lakefront piece, just making sure that people can get to the lakefront, east-west is a great movement, but, you know, the lake doesn't hold population, we need to get our population to the lake, so all of that was addressed in the final report as well, a lot of this is on the MetroParks Long Range Plan, as well as we have quite a few communities within the county that are really trying to move forward their own kind of local trail networks and bike lane networks as well, so the final site plans, this is something that was running concurrent to our transportation piece, and these definitely have the, I would say, the graphics that kind of sell that, you know, have the sizzle that go along with it, but in addition to looking at our active transportation and multimodal transportation, we are also looking at economic development, so the criteria that we set basically was that every single community picked one site, it didn't have to be one parcel, but just one area that they wanted to look at as a reinvestment area, and the only caveat to that is it had to be along the corridor, it had to function with our multimodal transportation recommendations, so in Vermillion, we looked at what became the Lakefront Park, every single one of these options started off with two, we sat down with every single community, we hired Insight as our economic development consultant, and through above and beyond all the stakeholder meetings I mentioned, we sat down and actively talked to every single community multiple times, finding out what their needs were, what their desires were, what their wish lists were, some people, you know, were very pragmatic as far as what they were aiming for, and some communities go big or go home, and they really wanted to feel that, you know, we were creating something a little bit different than had been planned for in the future, or I'm sorry, than in the past, to move the future forward, so in Vermillion, we ended up with the Lakefront Park, this is just west of the old Ford Plant in Lorraine, this is something, though, it's a very, very wet site, right now, it is a junkyard for cars, we are in talks with IRG to see if we can potentially relocate those vehicles to a different space, and create this as a lakefront park facility, we worked hand-in-hand with MetroParks on this, and they are definitely interested in, you know, seeing this potentially move forward, the big thing about this, though, is that the water that you're seeing, the way that the trail is going through there adjacent to the roadway is very intentional, it's a very wet, very woody area, especially when you move to the west of the existing junkyard, and we want to celebrate that, we want to make sure that we are playing that up, we also have, in addition to our paths, people really wanted to view the lake, they felt like there weren't enough areas to see the lake, especially put your toes in the water, but even get to it, and we also heard a lot of people like watching the trains go by, we know there's an area in Vermillion that you can do that downtown, but a little outside of downtown, we thought this was a great idea to pull people up, so this is just south of the railroad tracks, kind of taking advantage of, you know, watching the engines go by, watching the cargo go by, as well as being high enough up to see the lake over those trains and over that vista, so we thought that was really important, kind of playing up the, just this notion of being able to access and see, everything that we're showing, just trying to go for federal funding, is ADA accessible, so these, you know, risers that you're seeing are just earth and mounds that follow all ADA criteria, in Lorraine, they really wanted to focus on their finger peers, and really understanding what could be done with that, we went through a couple different options, and the main one that we went forward with as the final recommendation involved a conference center, not a convention center like you see at Calahari or downtown Cleveland, but a conference center, kind of that mid-range, and it was very convenient that as we were looking at this as an option, Cranes actually published their list of all the different conference centers, convention centers in the area, there's actually a missing gap, there's a need for those mid-sized conference centers, so one of the main anchors of this, to kind of promote people and development, was a conference center with a hotel attached to it, once again, this is a mid-size, you're probably dealing with at most 500 to 1,000 people in one room at a time, more close to that 500, but multiple areas that could host that, so we are looking at that, as well as, you know, kind of understanding what that hotel footprint could look like, the directive for us on this one was that they wanted City Hall to not be shown, and potentially use that as prime lakefront redevelopment area, what could this be instead, so that's how we're able to have enough space for that conference center and for that hotel, full-on promenade going along our river out to the lake, making sure that we're creating this public open space, once again, we're kind of built up on these piers, so we can't put toes in the water, but oh my goodness, we can get so close, so we're showing here a plaza, potentially some sand, think of a giant container, it can hold sand no problem, they're all over Toronto on the lake, we wanted to bring people out, so it feels like you're, you are right next to it, you just can't quite get to it, toes in the water, but getting almost there, we thought that was incredibly important for downtown, and once again, kind of pulling in, how do we get people to the lake, from our main east-west corridor, up on a public promenade, wider than it needs to be, we want this thing to be substantial, we want it to be public, that was one thing that we heard, that if this happens, make sure that we allow the public on the waterfront, don't let this be exclusively private development up to the edge, we want to make sure that everyone, no matter if you live there or work there, or just visiting, can always walk, so Lorraine site was definitely pretty significant, there's also some minor analyses regarding tax implications, property tax, income tax, in the final document, as far as our square footage, the use that's being proposed, as well as the income and property tax that would potentially be associated with those square footages, with the case of Vermillion, with that being a public site, obviously those numbers are a little bit different, because it's not a job generator or even most likely a property tax generator, moving to Sheffield Lake, this area is right by their existing boat launch, the, so the boat launch and the marina and break wall, that's actually existing right now, and we're playing off of that, the one thing that we did for this is reconfigure the angle that the boats would launch into that break wall area, so instead of heading directly north, we have them basically pulling out plenty of movement for two boats passing, but reconfiguring this and actually pulling that causeway into what is currently land, and doing a full-on redevelopment marina district in Avon Lake, and this is something that in talking to the mayor and some staff.
Sheffield Lake.
I'm sorry.
Sheffield Lake.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said Avon Lake.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Sheffield Lake, I am so sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, Sheffield Lake, in talking to the mayor, this is something that they felt that they didn't have before, and that, you know, in various plans that showed commercial redevelopment, kind of time and time and time again on the site, they wanted something a little bit different. So, this is different. This is definitely, there's some dollars associated with it. This would absolutely have to be a public-private partnership. In order to make the potential pro formas work on the redevelopment site, we would definitely need some public improvements. Pulling in these break walls, pulling in these causeways. The big thing with this, though, once again, public access, utilizing those break walls that we're showing that are adjacent to the causeway, and creating a, what feels like a waterfront walkway for Sheffield Lake residents, businesses, visitors alike. Definitely a very large infill housing development proposed here, specifically housing that doesn't maybe exist in Sheffield Lake now. You're seeing a lot of townhomes, a little bit more cluster home oriented to the back of the site, first-floor master, you know, trying to make sure that we are infilling with development that they feel that they don't have right now from residential competitiveness. And then, moving to Avon Lake, this is right to the east of the existing power plant that you see out there, just north of Electric, and it includes a little bit of Electric Boulevard. They were feeling like they really wanted to play off of that lakefront access. So, in addition to really feeling like we wanted some redevelopment and kind of creating a there-there as part of Avon Lake, really emphasizing the need for that waterfront recreation, viewing, access, et cetera. So, this view is a little bit more of that district center offices. We did keep the historic train station. They, they felt that it was very important in Avon Lake to keep that as part of their, part of their core, part of their history. So, that area is intact, and we kind of developed around it. You're seeing a little bit of density here, you know, three to four stories when you're south of our main corridor. But then, when we go north of the main corridor, we really start needing to build up in density in order to make the space work. There's a couple of property owners that were just not comfortable with us showing redevelopment on their sites. So, with that, we tightened up our footprint, but it was very important to the mayor of Avon Lake to show lakefront residential, still allowing for public movement, public access. So, with that, you're going to see a little bit more density. You know, some condos, some higher-end apartments, very close to the lake, still allowing lakefront access, a fishing pier, promenade that actually extends out to the lake. Once again, you kind of see that, that beach, that is a, it's a very rocky edge there, so we're kind of showing a container beach where you can get right up to the edge of the water, all public. So, they really wanted to make sure that north of their redevelopment and their mixed-use center, that this was something that the public could access and Avon Lake could celebrate. So, with that, if anyone has any questions, sorry for rushing through a year of process and a little bit of time.
No, I, I think it's important to point out that when you looked at these different sites that the various communities said that they'd like to look at for something in the future, for possible development in the future, that you actually looked at this from the standpoint of what will actually fit here, and what would the estimated cost be to, to build something of this size that actually fits the footprint?
Yeah. And parking as well. I think that sometimes that, when conceptually, we forget that whatever you build, you have to park. So, yes, we want people to walk, but we also want people to come from the outside, spend their dollars, and be able to park their vehicle.
And I think in this graphic here, you're also showing, right next to the pier, that's actually would be a proposed lakefront restaurant?
Yes. Almost the Lorraine, Sheffield, and Avon Lake, they all had restaurants. That was something that really came out of the process with that notion of wanting to be at the lake. We want to eat at the lake. We want to have a cocktail at the lake. We want to have a glass of wine. We want to watch a sunset. There aren't that many places along our coastline, in the entire region, let alone the county, that you can honestly really do that. So, that was in every single plan other than the park shown in Vermillion.
And I like the concept of the, the sand, but it's not exactly something that can be washed away by the water because it's elevated near the water. It's, it's a great concept.
We looked at that. I mean, we, you know, from a, from a restoration standpoint, we tried seeing if we could create that toes-in-the-water beach line. And as the commissioner said, it just, from a operations and maintenance standpoint, it would be washed away with one storm. So, for better or for worse, we are showing them being popped up, which comes with a little bit of upfront capital costs, but from an ongoing operation maintenance, I think it's much more stable.
Nice.
I've seen that before. The beach.
Good morning, Ms. Calucci. Grace Calucci, Executive Director of NOACA is here, paid for the funding of this. Any comments at all? Your fifteen minutes more of fame?
She's famous enough.
Be careful when you offer me the microphone.
I know that, I know that. I, I can turn it off, though.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you very much, Michelle, for your presentation. I think the most important thing that NOACA would like to comment on is we are very pleased to be able to provide to communities the planning funds to achieve some of the economic development that they need in their communities. But I also want to highlight that this really stresses how transportation and transportation infrastructures are really the foundation of any kind of economic development. Without the transportation plans in terms of mobility and access, you are very, very compromised then in the ability to develop an area economically. I think that the plans that your community has generated in partnership with NOACA and the consultants are outstanding. I will say that it really demonstrates that the entire lakefront in Lorraine County can be connected, that it really is an issue of access to the lakefront and to provide your citizens the quality of life that they deserve. So, I think this is terrific.
Wonderful. Yeah, the TLCI grants are wonderful grants, and there's implementation money now.
Yes, and that's what I was going to say. We obviously have a new, new program, second year now, that will provide and does provide funds for the implementation of TLCI planning, the, the plans. And although those funds are not a whole lot of money, we're talking about a million and a half dollars a year, certainly there'll be aspects of this that we can, we can begin to unfold while we search for other funding for you. So, really, it's intended to be a parallel to get the lift moving.
Thank you. Glad you came to Lorraine County today.
Yes, I love Lorraine County.
I know you do.
I just want to thank you, Grace, for your leadership, and, and I tell people all the time that working with NOACA is just, it's just a real true delight and pleasure. Your staff is always so professional and always willing to help out, and actually always encouraging us, hey, give us a call if we can be, you know, help to you, we want to help you. And we very much, this county very much appreciates being awarded these grants. We also have one for transit that we're, we're finalizing as well. And, but I think, you know, as, as Cleveland being the hub of NOACA, that we have this beautiful lakefront, you know, throughout the NOACA region, and certainly any way that we can better utilize it and, and have that important connectivity through the trails and the bike lanes and transit and everything else is, is really critical. But I just want to thank you and your organization for believing in us and providing the funding that was critically needed. We definitely enjoyed working with Environmental Design Group. They've done tremendous work, and, and I, you know, I think this is, what's great about NOACA is NOACA always stresses this collaborative effort, and that you also stress public input on projects, and I think we had strong public input on these projects as well, too. But it wouldn't have been possible without your, your support on these projects.
Thank you very much. Again, with NOACA, we are a regional organization, but we like to place emphasis on serving the local communities as part of a region. And I do want to acknowledge Commissioner Kalo and Commissioner Lundey, who are board members of NOACA, and their leadership role, not only in the organization, but specifically on programs like the TLCI that they've recognized as being so key to the development of communities.
Wonderful. Nice job. Thank you, Grace.
Very nice.
And nice to see you, Commissioner Kokoske. I don't often get a chance to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the participating? Mayor Forthover. Welcome to the party, the new mayor of the city of Vermillion, Mayor Forthover.
Thank you very much. I am Jim Forthover, mayor of Vermillion. And the one thing I just want to say in regards to this lakefront connectivity development, or development plan, is that Vermillion is somewhat unique among small lakefront towns in that we vigorously embrace the lake. I mean, the lake for the city of Vermillion isn't just a pretty backdrop along with the Vermillion River. The lake is the reason we exist. I mean, in the early eighteen hundreds, people came because it was a, a transportation availability through the lake because land was not. Our commerce grew because of our access to the lake. And even though other ports became larger and took away some of our, our opportunities, it became one of the biggest small boat ports on the city, on the southern shore, Lake Erie. And the, the asset that we have, and the asset that we share with everyone up and down the lake, is really, I believe, capitalized on by what you're bringing to the table today, this lakefront connectivity plan. We are one hundred percent behind it. It recognizes what we have always recognized, which is the value of the lake, and it's a rare contribution to our economy and our people's well-being. And anything Vermillion can do to help make this become a reality, we are ready to do because it's a benefit to everyone up and down the line. I thank Commissioner Lundey and all of the commissioners, as well as your staff in NOACA, for helping bring this to the table. Vermillion's ready to help. That's all I have to say.
Wonderful plans out there, they really are. Again, as we lose our industrial base, and that closes up, I think, the tourism and the lakefront is our next big economic development surge. So, I mean, we really have to concentrate and find a way to fund it with the dollars needed, so. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just wanted to thank the mayor, really have enjoyed working with you, and also, you know, Mayor Zilka and Mayor Rittenhour had helped to be here this morning. They had some other commitments along with Mayor Bring, but Pat Hastings is here from Sheffield Lake. I don't know, Pat, did you want to add anything, or? No, not at this time. But Pat's been regularly involved in the meetings, and, and you can imagine how challenging it is sometimes just to, to get all the mayors in the room at the same time. But, but I can tell you, everybody has really jumped in with, with both feet and, you know, are very committed to making improvements to the lakefront and working with Jim Zemanek with the MetroParks as well. It's just been a great partnership, and, you know, this is the way that the taxpayers want us to work. They want us working together. I think this has been a, a great collaborative effort. I just want to stress that what you see here is conceptual. You know, obviously, these plans are expensive, and this is the planning process, but first you have to have a plan, first you have to have concepts. And, you know, I want to stress that nobody's looking at taking anybody's property. I know that's always a concern, but nobody's looking at taking anyone's property here. We're just simply putting some concepts on the table and saying that, you know, if, if the parties in those areas are interested in someday and, and working together, you know, with an investor to make this all possible, then we have some, some plans to, to move forward with. And, but it's been, it's been a great partnership. We have a, a beautiful lakefront. We're going to have to take some baby steps, you know, and crawl before we walk and walk before we run. But this stuff will take a little bit of time, but now that we have a plan, next is to look at if there are some portions here for implementation and how that can be done. You know, the connectivity is, is a major, major part of it, and so we'll continue to look for funding sources, grant sources. We'll continue to meet with some folks and see what interest they may have in trying to develop some of these areas. But we will get there one day, but it's going to require taking steps to get there. This isn't something you run to the, to the finish line on. So, I just want to thank everybody because I can tell you, all the partners involved here are very committed to improving the lakefront. As my colleague pointed out, we just have a, we all believe we have a huge economic opportunity here. We have something a lot of folks would love to have, and we just want to try to find ways to make the most of it and approach it with sensible growth.
Thank you.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, we did today, and I did sign this morning, get our grant out for the reentry to Department of Labor. It's a Department of Labor initiative to workforce development, to attempt to bring more funding into the reentry aspects of what's going on in the community, but it's, you know, the word reentry is too small for what the grant encompasses. It has to do with people that are on probation, parole, who have re-entered the community in the last eighteen months, and not just currently possibly incarcerated and coming back. We submitted two proposals, one for adults, one for youth. Don't misunderstand youth, it's eighteen to twenty-four. We could choose one or the other or both, but you cannot combine either into the one submission. So, we chose to have a proposal on the both, just, just to try to get as much out there as we could, because it's not unlimited funding, and there's probably a great, greatly a lot more need than, than the funding is going to address. I'll have more next week. It wasn't due until tomorrow or Friday. I'm not particularly sure which day, but my instructions were clear. We've had a few that we've waited to the, to the last day, still trying to get that last word in, that last sentence correct, that last paragraph, just stroked up nicely. And then, we run into problems with the grant submission, whether it's the wrong format, the wrong font, the, the wrong WordPerfect version, the, well, we couldn't find the password to, to the grants.gov and get in, and I think Mr. Longo missed one by twenty seconds because his password wouldn't work. So, I, I wanted a few days to sort out those things. So, this morning, I did, I did sign that, and I'll have a press release and a cheat sheet on that, probably for next Wednesday's meeting. I just wanted to let you know it got out.
Is it just for retraining?
It's for a host of services. It's, it's, it's for a lot of wraparound services. As you know, there's multiple barriers to success for people reentering and/or have re-entered in attempting to reestablish themselves in the community. I will tell you, CBCF, the courts, workforce development, the community college, and, and a few others have been hugely instrumental. Marty Aglen, he, he works on the reentry issues with the community college, he's also your choice to the children's services board. Can't miss Marty, he's only six foot nine and a half, so when he's in the room, he does tend to dominate. You know, he, he was there from, from the college. We had Sherry Klausert from the, from the courts, and domestic was in and out, depending on what part of the conversation worked for them with the domestication court, with Jody Briller. It, and Mike Willetts was fantastic over from the CBCF. It was a really strong cast of, of folks working in, in conjunction, a very small window of opportunity to put this together and get it out and bring a lot of data to the table. Everybody should be commended. Mike Longo will, will be our person with the boots on the ground if we get awarded any of these grants. And again, you're the grant applicant, you'll be the grant recipient, and we're going to run the grant to our workforce development agency. We need to start telling people how many of these things we apply for. Our success rate, like every other jurisdiction, is not high because they only give out a handful of these. So, we continue to make application after application after application and put the time, work, and energy into doing that. You know, we, we've been in the habit of not talking about the work behind the scenes and only talking about if we were successful at something. But people have to know that we're, we're working very, very hard on every opportunity out there. Of course, we had Bob Vistos as our grant writer pulling it all together in conference calls. He's been commended for getting that all done because coordinating everybody's busy schedule and activities and getting everything you need is, is a very big challenge. So, more to come next week on exactly what we're hoping to do and accomplish in the funding levels, but I wanted to know it went out.
Well, hopefully, you'll be at the community corrections board meeting. Is it this Thursday, next Thursday? You said you wanted to be on that board.
Yes, yes.
So, that would be good news at that, that meeting.
Well, it'd be good news if it got out. We won't know for some time whether, whether we are, you know, we are going to get in the works, just like we put out last week, put the pre-application to be able to apply for a grant. I think Don's still here. I love that, pre-application for a grant application. So, you have to get qualified before they even let you submit. It, it's, it's too much bureaucracy for me, but we're going to follow whatever course is necessary to keep chasing the funding streams and trying to bring them back to Lorraine County. Other than what I've indicated to you that we need an executive session for, I'll yield to counsel. Thank you.
Mr. Ernest.
I do have two matters of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss in executive session.
Commissioner's report.
Well, last week's meeting, I, I was not here because of the passing of my brother-in-law, Ron Trifletti. He was in law enforcement his whole life after serving in the Army, and it was amazing to see all the brotherhood of officers that came to pay their last respects to him. And his son, Adam, is one of our deputies, and so he's kind of following And his son, Adam, is one of our deputies, and so he's kind of following in his father's footsteps. And like his dad, Adam has a K-9, and his father, Ron, my brother-in-law, used to train K-9s, so he'll be missed. Thursday, I helped the Alaria Dems put on a fundraiser at St. Mary's. It was spaghetti with Betty, that was Betty Sutton. We had a nice turnout, and all the donated baskets went to the Valor Home Women's Project. So thank you to everyone that came and attended and donated to that. Monday, we had our goodwill board meeting, which we worked on our strategic plan, and the new Sheffield Lake store is doing very well, as anticipated. And then Tuesday, we all had the opportunity to view the Mapleview ditch in Brownham Township, and part of that is also in Vermillion. Huge turnout of interested residents, most of them who were not in favor of the project. It was, it was very lively discussion going on there, to say the least.
I'm sorry about ill, but was it 50/50?
It was like 99 to 1 against.
Quite contentious.
And that's a grant from, from the township, it's a grant.
It's not really about the money, it was more about taking the trees down, losing privacy, taking of the property, the yards.
Well, you know, it's not really the yards there, and I'm sorry, couldn't attend, I was out ill. But, but you do realize that the people have built in the, in the right of way, in the easement.
Right.
And they've actually homesteaded into the easement, and we tried to gerrymander around a lot of that to get through there. But the easement on the, and the restrictions on the titles of those properties is quite clear. There's no permanent builds on, on that, on that easement.
Well, they were arguing the point, though, to your residents, Mayor Forthover, that they were giving building permits to build on those properties that have easements.
But we didn't give them building permits.
Right, I know.
You know, the, the drainage easement is a drainage easement. You know, we, we have a lot of these problems where, as you know, people build in areas they should not build. Forget about where there's an easement, they, they building land that is going to flood in 10 or 15 years, it's just very dry right now. They build something, they wonder why they're underwater for a couple of years. But, but that's, we need, we need to point out that the township applied for a grant for that. So we didn't just arbitrarily go in there and...
No, no, it was a petition ditch.
Right. Well, it's not, it's a, it's a petition, but it's still because, but it's still a grant-funded project.
But the problem was, the people that signed the petition were not at the, at the viewing. And, you know, they're like, well, where's the guy that wanted this in the first place? Is this even going to solve his problem? So it's going to be quite...
Right, well, we had this out on Quarry Road. The, the, but it really only takes one person filing the petition, and it can be approved with one person asking the, but I'm, I'm very interested because Brownham, Brownham Township was the one that applied for the grant funding. They had the petition filed because it's a requirement of us to have a petition so we can have a hearing. But hopefully, they were there at this ditch viewing, which you...
Orin was there.
Right. Well, there are a couple of them were there.
Was there two?
Yeah.
And Jerry was there.
Were you wingtips, Ted?
No, 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 no. I was in boots, man, I thought we were walking that. And I knew half of the residents on the Vermillion side.
It was the first time we ever saw Jerry Ennis get booed. Because they thought, oh, the prosecutor's office is here, he's going to prosecute us.
And the people on the Vermillion city side were wondering how it was going to be paid for in regards to their maintenance and assessment versus the Stormwater District paying it in the unincorporated area. There was a lot of discussion, it was going to be an exciting meeting. Was it June 5th?
Correct, 9:30.
Come join us, Mayor.
Yeah.
I used to be councilman for that region.
Oh, did you?
Quite a few meetings.
Well, the yards there are kind of small. And then when you take the, the ditch and then the easement, it really is cutting like half of their backyard out of, you know, and then mostly the trees and the privacy issues.
They have beautiful backyards.
Really nice backyards, yeah.
Folks have really fixed up their backyards.
They're small, though.
Yeah, they're small.
So that, that was a big...
You'd be surprised how many people have easements on their property have no clue they're there.
Correct. Nobody reads page 622 of their title.
Right, the title companies are not very good at pointing out all the easements on your, on your property. They'll, they'll check the boundary stuff, but really, they don't disclose. You could have two, three, four easements, they, they'll, it'll be listed in your paperwork somewhere, but nobody pays attention to that.
Right. And a lot of those are the issues, people don't know, purchased a house, put fences up recently, and, you know, again, once the fences are down, but we don't put their fences back up, so the cost of that, then there's always the claims that can be filed for recourse. And they're asking what their ability was to challenge it if it is approved.
And letting their dogs out after they take the fence down to bite the people working on the front.
Oh, you had those kind of folks, huh?
Oh, yeah.
I always loved, I love irrational people.
It started out quite contentious.
Well, what ditch did we do? The, the wingtip ditch, the...
Straw Hague?
No, 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 no. That was the one...
The one we walked through the cemetery and down to the golf course.
Which one?
Straw Hague, right? Remember how ugly Straw Hague was for a while? So that was where we talked, what kind of shoes to show up in.
Or the Murray Ridge Road one. What was that, when we walked in those backyards, they wouldn't let us in? A lot of them, they wanted us on the front.
Oh, that was, that was...
That's for orphanage.
That was, no, that was the one with the lady with the trees back there.
Right.
We just did that.
That was for orphanage.
We just...
Huh? Browning ditch?
Browning, yeah. The one, the one where we had the crossings and the trees in the back, with the pond, the fish were, yeah, yeah, that was fun. That was where the, all the spiders were back there.
Yeah. Lauren, I went for a second shift there.
Mr. Lundey was thanking me for his, his, his being able to do all these viewings.
Yeah, six, six years of college and I'm walking through muddy ditches. There's nothing wrong with that.
Didn't have ditches in Columbus, huh, Commissioner?
No.
Nope.
That's under my report.
Jim Zemanek, our director of Metro Parks walking, you missed a presentation. Any comments at all in regards to it, or?
No, I'm just, you know, on behalf of Metro Parks, happy that it was completed, and hopefully we'll find some opportunities.
Microphone, he says.
Microphone, I can't hear you, Jim. You're not straightening loud enough.
We could hear Hal out of the background.
I could hear Hal yelling at you.
Well, thank you again. I apologize for running late. I had an emergency meeting with, with another organization and drove like a maniac to get here. But, no, so, sorry that we, that I missed the meeting, but again, in, in reading the report, on behalf of Metro Parks, we're excited that it's completed, and hopefully we'll find some opportunities to work together and bring forward something from the plan going forward. I know there were some, some difficulties in, in probably looking to fund some of these, but I think, you know, Metro Parks, we try to serve everybody as, as well as the county, so, working with the communities. We hope there's some, some great opportunities to go forward, to make something happen along the lakefront, so.
Appreciate, appreciate all your participation.
Yeah, Jim's been...
Can you stick around after the meeting? I might just talk to you about something else.
Sure. Like windows, maybe?
Yeah, Jim's been a great partner to work with, and, you know, obviously with his experience dealing with a lot of planning initiatives, that's been a great, great experience to bring to the tables. We've worked through it, but can't say enough good things about our county metro park system. They're always a willing and very capable partner. So, thank you, Jim.
Yeah, busy week. Grace Galucci left, but last week, right after Commissioners' meeting, I had to leave to attend the 50th anniversary. They had a presentation at the City Club, talking about the 50 years of Noaka. They brought back some past board members from years ago to talk about the beginnings and the origins, and then where we're at today. So very nice presentation, and congratulations, 50 years of regional working together, you know, a true council of governments. Also, we had the elected officials reception last week at Parkers. That went very well, nice to sit and talk to the business community from the government's standpoint. Fine job with spaghetti with Betty. Let's see, what else do we have on here? Oh, camera, oh, presented a plaque at the workers' memorial day in the city of Lorraine last Friday afternoon, you know, commemorating the many years of workers' rights. Lions Club pancakes, as always, fine job in Lorraine. The Mapleview ditch viewing was amazing. We also had investment advisory committee meeting. The treasurer said, due to rising interest rates, he's raising our expected revenue a couple of hundred thousand dollars this year. But again, treasurer Tellerick is quite conservative, so I'm expecting more than what he said. Congratulations, Lorraine County Community College, President Marcia Ballinger, top community college in the nation for excellence they were awarded. That was in Dallas, correct, Mr. Cordez?
It was in Dallas, but I was a little sick in bed, so I missed the big gala. But yes, they, once again, our community was recognized as a leader through our community college, and it was, it was actually a very, very large victory.
Yes, six were nominated, and our college came in number one tops, so.
In the country.
In the country, yes.
Correct.
Wow, that's amazing.
Also, this Tuesday, folks, it's election day. Please get out and vote, exercise your right. Turnout has been extremely low. There's governor's primaries, we have local elected officials, we have very important levy issues on the ballot, mental health, developmental disabilities, things very important. So please get out and vote. Board of Elections is open for in-voting. I believe they're open Saturday and Sunday this weekend. And then by Tuesday, May 8th, get out and vote. Thank you, and my report.
As a proud Lorraine County Community College graduate, was just thrilled to see that the community college is receiving national recognition and winning a top national award. I think there are a lot of people who believe that, well, you know, every county in Ohio has a community college, right? That's not the case. We're really blessed and fortunate, and, you know, we're doing cutting-edge stuff all the time over the community college. So I hope the community continues to support our community college. It definitely changes lives. I know it changed my life. Congratulations to the chamber on a well-held event, meet the elected officials. Thought that went very well over Parkers and Avon Lake. Big, big turnout at the Avon Lake Library, Ohio EPA had a public hearing there regarding NRG seeking a new discharge permit. Boy, it was very well-attended, and there's no question that the residents of Lorraine County feel strongly about keeping our lake very healthy. And it was a very well-attended meeting and a lot of good input from residents. The North Coast Business Expo was held in Avon Lake. A lot of the small businesses along the North Coast were in attendance. Congratulations to the Alaria Dems on the spaghetti with Betty. Saw familiar face working at the front table there. Who was that lady?
That was me.
That was you?
Did dishes afterwards.
And you did dishes afterwards? Wow, okay.
Lori does dishes.
Lori does dishes, okay. And Dave Keener, boy, I don't know what he puts in that spaghetti sauce, but I go to a lot of spaghetti dinners, and that sauce is pretty darn good. So he did a great job. Also, want to make sure that we always remember the importance of organized labor here in Ohio and across the country, making the workplace a lot safer. We know that, you know, those who work as first responders, they go to the job every day knowing the risk, but, you know, workers expected to go to the factory and go to the plant and wherever it may be and come home that day. But sadly, a lot of workers are still dying on the job, so we need to continue to bring awareness to safety at the workplace. And had a chance to participate in the workers' memorial on the square in Alaria. We, of course, informed everybody with the courthouse being done and the renovations all done, that next year, folks will be able to have that ceremony at the actual workers' memorial, which I'm always amazed when I tell people about the event, and they say, where's the memorial? Well, now you're actually going to be able to see it, and it's going to be all spruced up and cleaned up as part of that project.
It, yes, it will. The WW2 memorial, we've had it, it was lost in the bushes there. It's quite a nice stone. It's being buffed, cleaned, buffed and polished. And there's going to be meditation benches installed, and it'll be lit. It's going to be lit from the ground up. We're still working on how not to freeze up the LED lights, same with the workers' memorial. We pulled out the mulch that used to lead up to it, and we've installed some nice stamped concrete, some reflection benches, meditation benches. The problem with their, this, their memorial is they use sandstone, which is very nice to do in, in Lorraine County, especially tip of the hat to the quarries and the sandstone capital. But it's a very hard stone to, to work with, keep clean. So we're having it cleaned, you can't really polish sandstones. We're going to have it cleaned and sealed, and that, that should give a little bit more longevity to it. It was looking pretty ruddy from sitting out in the weather for a lot of years, similar to the courthouse.
That's what I was going to say.
So, so that, again, we've taken the shade off of that. That should help the stone keep dry, dry out without getting the green and black mold on it. So all those things are going to be given a lot more dignity and respect than just sitting in the middle of a nasty green shrubbery. And that'll be lit also.
Yeah, yeah. The congratulations to all the recipients at the 44th Annual Founder's Day luncheon hosted by the Lorraine County Negro Business and Professional Women's Association. That was very well-attended there at Rosewood. And congratulations to the students who were honored, the Avon Lake High School students at their achievement dinner on Sunday in Avon Lake. And that completes my report.
Madam Clerk?
For correspondence?
Move the reading be waived.
Second.